Call the media.
Yes, thank you. And as they come to the mic, I'll give just a little brief explanation. Each year, the National Association of Music Merchants selects school districts to be recognized as being among the best communities for music education. Now in its eighteenth year, the awards program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of the curriculum. We're honored this evening, we have four representatives from Schmidt Music. Tom Schmidt is at the mic, and Tom is a Hudson resident. His kids went through our system, so we're very, very pleased to have Tom with us this evening and being part of this wonderful recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Is this on, by the way? Can you hear me? So, let's see, we have Mark Bobnick, my colleague, and Paul Thompson, and Jordan Swantek, who is our educational representative here in the Hudson schools. It'll be part of the celebration tonight. So, appreciate that very much, that nice introduction. Tonight, I'm here representing, first of all, NAM, the International Music Products Association, and its nine thousand plus member companies and hundreds of thousands of employees worldwide, and also our own company, Schmidt Music Company, here in the Midwest. And it's, it just gives me a great deal of pride to stand here tonight in front of many of my friends and neighbors, and congratulate all of you for being selected as one of our great country's top communities for music education. So, I would first of all, just like to give all of you a round of applause and recognize that great accomplishment. So, will you join me, please? I guess you'd be very proud to be selected as one of America's top communities, because as we all know, music really does make the difference for so very many of our students. And if I may, just on a personal note, my wife Laura and I have been residents here in Hudson for about twenty-five years. Mr. Grambo used to teach our daughter Mary, as a matter of fact, and all three of our kids went through the Hudson schools, and one of our daughters-in-law went through the Hudson schools, graduated from Hudson High School. They're all well-established in their professional careers right now, and I attribute a lot of the success that they're enjoying right now to the great education and preparation and work ethic that they learned here from all of you. So, I really am very thankful personally to all of you for the great work that you've done for all these many years, and want to encourage you to stay on the path of excellence in education, and particularly in music education. So, thank you from my wife and I, too, personally. Now, tonight, what we want to do, first of all, is respect all of your time. So, we have these awards that we have produced, and what we'd like to have is all of the music faculty that are here, come on up, they're alphabetized, and select or pick up your awards. That's probably the fastest way to do it, and while they're doing that, then we'll hand out awards to all of your school board members for your own personal walls of fame. Then we'll take a group photo, looks good in the newspapers, and get out of here so you can get back to the important business of running the district. Okay? So...
Music faculty, will you come forward and take a picture? Why, your first name? Yes, I'm first. Well, how are you? Nice to see you. Very nice to see you. And I'm sorry, I did school dress. Let's keep our secrets. I can tell you some stories. You know, I was at New York. She was great. What do you guys like to do at school?
Oh, well, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm a big supporter of finance.
Except for, oh, he'll be here. Yep. Yeah, 'cause he'll show up, he's actually gonna be...
Do you not trust us? Thank you very much.
Do you have one for Bruce Hansel? Okay, 'cause I can take care of it.
Standing them all together. If you guys want to go behind and stare. Right here is...
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, that's a good idea. Do you want me to scoot my chair around? You've been good. I have no bunny ears. No bunny ears behind you. I'll wait for...
That's awesome. Wow. That was dangerous.
All right, thank you very much, school board. See you all later.
Thank you. See you again.
Yeah, see you again.
You're welcome. Good to see you. See you tomorrow. Thank you, everyone. Now, am I on? All right. I want to thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for the presentation, for the nice plaque, and I want to thank all of our faculty who are here, because they're really the ones that make Hudson excellent in music education. So, very appreciative of their work, and it's great to get awards and the recognition and part of the raider pride that we all feel. So, thank you again. We still have more recognition, speaking of education, and our principals. Who wants to take this?
I'll take this. So, we had two new principal hires this fall, or this fall, I'm sorry, this spring, and both the gentlemen were able to make it tonight, so I'm gonna have them both come up here and introduce themselves, and just kind of give you a little bit of a background of where they're, where they're coming from, and what buildings they're in, and just if you have any questions or anything for them, but just be able to put a face with the names as we continue to work through the school year. We, I will tell you that we had very strong candidate pools for both of these positions, lots of applicants. We were very fortunate, and there is, I can say without hesitation, I'm very excited for both of these gentlemen, taking the helm of the two open positions we have. So, go ahead, Joe, or if you want to go ahead and get started.
Yep. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for inviting us here tonight. My name is Joe Banky. I'm the principal at Hudson Prairie Elementary. This is my first principal position. It was a very exciting day today to actually have staff in the building. Very excited for Thursday as well, to get students in the building, too. I can't wait for that, that opportunity. Little background about myself, I was a second grade teacher for five years down at Willow River. I switched to fourth grade down there for five more years, and then last year, I was able to go to fifth grade at Rivercrest, which is right down the road from our house, and my son started kindergarten out there. And so, it was great to start his, his educational journey with him, and then the opportunity was presented to be the principal at Hudson Prairie, and just couldn't be more excited and happy to have, to have that opportunity. You know, it's been a huge learning curve with this short summer, but the work's been a lot of fun. People come up all the time and say, "Are you feeling overwhelmed?" I'm like, "Well, yeah, but that's okay." That's, that comes with, with the territory until you get into it a little bit. My buildingmate Jim has been very helpful along the process here, and just, again, thank you for having me tonight. Very excited about Thursday in particular, when the students get back. The parking lot will be done by then over there, and life will be good. So, thank you.
Hopefully.
Good evening, everyone. Again, yes, thank you for, for having us here tonight. I'm sorry that it took so long for me to get here and meet you, but I am Jim Delune. I am a Hudson resident, and I've been here for sixteen years as a Hudson resident, and I'm coming back to the middle school after spending thirteen years as an associate, and the past three years as a head principal down at Prescott. Amazing first day today with staff. The, the look on their faces as we went into our brand-new space, the opportunities that they saw that will be created for our students to collaborate, to, to use that space in multiple versatile ways. It's just gonna be a fantastic year at the middle school. So, I also have two boys, recent graduates of Hudson High School. Both are doing very, very well. My oldest, Jackson, has made the dean's list two quarters, or two semesters in a row, and is gonna be a sophomore at River Falls, and my youngest just graduated and is gonna be a freshman up at Northern Michigan. So, and then I can't forget my wife, who is an educator here in Hudson as well at the high school, and so we're, I'm home, and I can't thank you enough.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Welcome. All right. Next up, we have citizens' requests to speak about non-action items. Do we have any requests?
No.
All right. And then we go to superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Olet. I'll let you decide which one of those reports you want to give first.
Well, we, why don't we work from the bottom up?
Okay.
So, the WASB Regional Meeting and Workshop, it's October twenty-fourth. That is, if you click on the link, I'm trying to find here, I thought we had...
Yeah, it does not have the location. I noticed that.
I think it's...
I'm gonna need to know that in order to get there, 'cause I'll be in Milwaukee earlier that day.
Okay, I think it, I believe it's Total Lake. If it's not...
No, it's Eau Claire.
It's Eau Claire.
Is this one the Eau Claire?
It's Eau Claire, and it's, but we just don't know which hotel.
Any place we met before?
Well, it's been in the one location, but I thought I saw a different hotel this time, so...
We'll figure it out.
It's gonna be near that exit seventy-one, whatever the...
It's October twenty-fourth, so we'll, we'll get the dates figured out. If you would like to go, please let Tim Minor know in the next few weeks. Let's put a cutoff of, I don't know, let's call it September first, that'd be two weeks. That way, we have plenty of, if we put it out too far, then people kind of forget about it. So, September first, Tim will be sending out a reminder to everybody that if you haven't talked to him, let us know, yes or no, so at least we know one way or the other, if he would like to go.
Can I just ask, do we have any board members that are hankering to go for the workshop program, the pre-regional workshop?
I would, I would go, Jamie, if someone else was interested in making the track. Is that the Florium, by the way, in Eau Claire?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But I would be, yeah.
All right, we'll get the address on that, but that starts at four-thirty. Otherwise, the dinner doesn't start till six-thirty, and since I'll be in depositions in Milwaukee earlier that day, I'll be just coming in for the dinner.
Let's, let's talk, Heather, 'cause I'm gonna go, and I can go early if you want.
Good to see we have interest there, but it's talking about state budget, which...
It's so exciting.
We can cross our fingers whether or not it'll be done by then, so...
Okay. Yeah, it just depends on if any other companies are gonna relocate to Wisconsin, you know? They want to delay the budget. So, that's the WASB Regional Meetings. Back-to-school schedule, you can click on that, just a reminder, we've sent this out to, to the board members, but tomorrow, we have our, kind of our, our bigger back-to-school day as it relates to all staff. We will be at Hudson Prairie's gym to do the all-staff address and meeting. We have kind of an abbreviated all-staff meeting tomorrow. Typically, we would have all-staff in the auditorium from about eight-thirty until probably about eleven, eleven-thirty, but what we are going to do is we're incorporating a wellness walk tomorrow. Originally, that was going to be a few laps around the track at the high school, and then over to the middle school, but if you've driven by the high school, you realize that's not actually physically possible at this point. So, we've sent out an email about the wellness walk, that's gonna be at the middle school tomorrow. It'll still start at eight o'clock, laps around the middle school track, and different parking. If you, if you're coming to the wellness walk or any of the activities, obviously, the earlier, probably the better, because parking will be at a premium over at Hudson Prairie and at the middle school. We anticipate that the lot will be paved by tomorrow, but that may be a, a high level of, of expectation, yeah. So, even if it is paved, it may not be, it for sure won't be striped, so it'll be kind of a hodgepodge of parking, but by Thursday, everything will be done. So, we have the address, you go on and hear Jamie's best fifteen minutes, that'll start at eight forty-five, so he'll be talking. We're gonna switch up, we'll put the United Way in between Jamie and I, and then I'll kind of finish up with all-staff, and then the elementary are going to head to the Hudson Prairie, I don't know if they're staying there and everybody else is leaving, but probably won't be the whole district staying for the common message, and then...
That's just elementary.
That's just elementary, and then what'll happen is, we'll have self-guided tours of the middle school spaces, so the reason we've built some time in, they'll do their self-guided tour of the middle school spaces, and then also work their lunch in, so that they can be back in their buildings by noon. So, the anticipation is, you know, you have probably about a half hour to, to an hour of checking out the spaces at the middle school, and then working their, getting lunch, and then working their way back to their respective buildings around the district. We have the different open houses, you're always welcome to attend the open houses. On Wednesday, we have just building-level professional development, so there's not a whole lot to, to see as far as from a district standpoint. First day of school is on the seventeenth, it's still on the seventeenth, contrary to what people might be saying on Facebook. We are still planning on opening on the seventeenth. The Raider Family Barbecue, that is on the twenty-fifth, so that is before the first home football game, so it's more of a, it's kind of a staff appreciation type of barbecue. We're gonna have it in the new stadium. It'll start at five-thirty, we'll have burger, or I'm sorry, we'll have brats and hot dogs, cookies and chips, and watermelon, and pop, and water. And I've been assured by, by Peg Eller, who's helping us with this, is that these will be the full-flavored hot dogs and brats and buns and things, and not necessarily the Healthy Kids Act, hot dogs and brats and things like that. So, so we'll work through that. So, the administrative team, Hudson lead, will be doing all the serving and, and working that for staff. We anticipate probably fifteen hundred staff members and their family, and then they're allowed to kind of stay for the game at no cost, and, and so, which brings me kind of to my next point, which is the open house, which is on the nineteenth, or which I guess I should say was on the nineteenth. At this point, with the weather that's coming on Wednesday, and the stage in which things are in, I think we're gonna make that call that we're going to have to cancel or postpone the open house of the stadium that was originally supposed to be on the nineteenth, because I just don't, I don't think we'll be ready. We have, we're really close, but right now, we want to make sure everybody's efforts getting the buildings open for kids, more than it is getting the stadium open for an open house. And so, what we're talking, Tracy and I are working through some items where we will, we'll be putting out some communication tomorrow about the open house being canceled, but we will be adding some activities to the front end of the first home football game, which is on the twenty-fifth, where people will talk, some of the folks that we're planning on talking at the open house, we get an opportunity to talk at that time on the twenty-fifth, if they're, if they're available, but, which kind of leads me into the next part of my report, which is the construction update. To say that I sent you an update about a week and a half ago that things were tight, I wasn't lying, they're, they are tight. We've had a couple tough days of weather in the last week, you know, we basically went the whole month of July with no rain, and then the month of August has been really tough. And so, we've had some challenges there, that's part of what's kind of pushed our, our open house back. I mean, there's a strong possibility that it could potentially be done, but I would hate to wait too much longer before we cancel it, because we would just, there are people...
You said cancel slash postpone, which, is it more of a cancel, or, 'cause I know you were thinking of a back-up date for that Thursday, but...
We were potentially thinking of a back-up date of the Thursday, 'cause, but there's a home soccer game that night, so we thought potentially of doing that, 'cause we did have quite a few, I think we had RSP, almost a thousand athletes that were gonna walk around the track and do kind of that Olympic kind of opening. I just don't know if we can turn around in, in a week, week and a half, and get everybody, get everybody there. So, it's just some of the challenges that, that go with this.
So, it, you're, you're still in the matter of, because tonight, you're just announcing that it's being canceled slash postponed, that some of these events you're thinking of adding to that first football game...
Correct.
Could be the parade, or not?
At this time, I, I don't have a good answer for you. We'll have to talk about it a little bit further. We just kind of came to this...
It's kind of tough when we start the school year, almost every night, there's some group that has something going on, and we did promise we were gonna get good use of our facilities, so it's...
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on, and, and it may be something that we can tie in, Tracy and I are gonna talk a little bit more about it, but we just kind of came to this realization really today with where they're at, with some of the concrete work that needs to happen, the fencing that needs to happen, and then...
The weatherman not cooperating.
The weatherman's not cooperating. Right now, it's, the chances of rain for Wednesday, I think, have bumped up to almost a hundred percent, and then there's some chances of rain on Friday now, so if all of a sudden, we lose two full days between now and then, I mean, it just, we won't be ready for Saturday night. I mean, we're really close, but, and certain trades can work in the rain, and they have worked in the rain, bleacher guys have worked in the rain, certain things on the inside, but pouring concrete and getting that stuff done can't happen in the rain, so, so that's kind of where we're, kind of where we're at, which brings me to kind of construction update and where we're at with things. So, at the high school, or I guess we'll start at the middle school, it seems to be a little bit easier situation to kind of talk about, depending on what part of the middle school you're looking at. The, we've had a delay on our furniture that we ordered almost five months ago, wasn't it, Tim? Science furniture, so our science tables that were supposed to be in about the fifteenth, sixteenth of June are still not here yet. They were supposed to send loner tables, those are still not here yet, and so now our backup plan C, D, or E, whatever you want to refer to it as, is we will be taking some desks out of storage that we have for those rooms that right there.
We got, we have one more change to that backup plan.
Oh, hey, we have...
So, yeah, so we've got, we've got the company that we're working with, they've got some loner chairs for us, so we'll be using those until, until the, we've got about ninety stools for three science classrooms that haven't come in yet, and so I'll be using chairs until those come in the end of the month.
So, definitely, it's interesting, because you think you've planned far enough ahead, you get things ordered far enough ahead, and then you have manufacturers or contractors that kind of throw wrench in things, and, and make some, make some challenges for us. But the new spaces at the middle school are, are completed, they're working punch-list items at this point, the offices have been updated and ready to go. One thing that's, again, another lead-time issue, is the lockers in what was the old Merlin, old Excalibur. They didn't get ordered in time. The contractor tried to come back to us, I think about a month ago, and say, "Oh, hey, I didn't have these in my bid." It's a thirty-seven thousand dollar ad, and we said, "Oh, hey, they've been in the plans from the beginning." So, they, they did order them, the problem was there's a ten-week lead time on them. And so, so we should be getting the lockers from Merlin Excalibur, or Old Merlin, Old Excalibur, I think sometime in the middle of September. So, the middle school staff has put together game plan for the kids that are in those houses, what they're gonna do with their stuff, and their Chromebooks, and, and all those different things, so that definitely was a glitch as we, as we worked through it. Very, very disappointing, because those houses themselves look very nice, that they've been remodeled and redone, but they are missing lockers. The middle school parking lot was supposed to be done August first, it's now August fourteenth, it's still not done. Not for lack of us calling our contractors on that, or trying to hold them accountable. It just, we can't get them here, can't get them here. First delay was the concrete contractor not getting guys here when we need, first delay was they didn't start the project like they're supposed to July first, and then it was gonna start July fifth, and then it was gonna start July ninth, and I think it didn't really actually start till July fifteenth. And so, that was the first delay, tearing out some of the old asphalt and things like that, and then the concrete contractor was, it's the same contractor that's on the high school, so the high school is behind, so they were pulling all their crews over there, which created some issues for us at the middle school. And then the asphalt contractor has been delayed in finishing the asphalt at the middle school, and part of that was because the concrete wasn't done for them to set the asphalt. So, we have been assured, now, I've been assured several times up to this point on that project, that it will be done by Thursday, come hell or high water. So, we told them, we, I mean, we have to, not only does it have to be patched back in, we have to stripe it, because it's not a parking lot that's very self-explanatory, I mean, the way it's laid out. We do have a lot of signs coming, a lot of temporary signs, those have been ordered, those should be coming here, I think, what, tomorrow, Tracy, is that we're anticipating? We'll have district staff out there for the start of the middle school day, start of the Hudson Prairie's day, start of the high school day, helping direct traffic. We have additional law enforcement for both locations for the start of the school days, helping with, with directing traffic and things along those lines. So, we are, we are working through these things, and when we do get people on site, they are working long hours, and they are getting things done. It's just, right now, one of the things that we're finding is that when things are rubbing up economically, and you see the low unemployment that everybody wants to brag about, which is a good thing, it does create some challenges for us, because the union halls are empty, there's nobody they can go to the bench and get, and it creates a worker shortage, is essentially what's happened. And so, that's, that's, that's created some challenges on the projects. At the high school project, start outside, tennis courts are done. The practice fields, several of the lines are in the wrong spot, they were either designed wrong, where the fields were narrow, they're supposed to be a hundred and sixty feet wide, they were only installed at a hundred and fifty feet wide. So, either they are going to, they, they have to move the lines out to make the fields the right width. That will be done at not a cost of the district, 'cause either there was a design issue related to it, or an installation issue related to it, either way, our civil engineer said they will take care of it, and there'll be no cost to the district. So, we're working through to get that done. We have a bunch of signs that are going up at the, and that's at the practice fields, not on the game field. There are a bunch of signs that are going up, because apparently, people see this big green piece of turf, and it's great when they go out there and play with their kids and do all that stuff, but they bring their dogs out there, which we would prefer them not to keep, and not to have animals out on the turf and things like that for obvious reasons. And so, we'll have some signs that'll say, you know, "Please no animals on the turf," and, and no colored beverages and gum, and just different things that, that'll be going up. Those should be going up, I would imagine. Tracy, again, those are coming the next couple of days?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and so those will be getting installed. The parking lot on the north side is being, it got graded today, it's getting paved tomorrow. The second lift of the parking lot on the south side, which is the one that a lot of people were worried about, around the ponds, that's, that's now done, it's got both lifts on, they're gonna stripe it tomorrow, so that parking lot is ready to go. The curb on Vine is finally in and correct, so third time is the charm, apparently, so they had to take that curb out twice and reinstall it, none of which was to the district's expense. The stadium is coming along, it, you know, the track, they still anticipate they'll be done by the end of the week, they got a long ways to go, they have about two-thirds of it covered with the black rubber, they have about another third, they were hoping to get done potentially tonight yet. You may see them working at night, we gave them a light key, they turned the lights on, they did work Friday night, and some, some of the day, or some of the day on Saturday installing. The bleachers are just about completed, working through that. The biggest hole up right now is our concrete flatwork in the plaza areas and things along those lines. Our light fixtures on top of the post have, we ordered those back in May, and they are back-ordered until September, so we may have to bring in some temporary lighting in the plaza area and things like that for when we do have our first game, because it's just a manufacturing issue with our, some of our lights on the, and those are the lights that are on those pillars that are, that are in the plaza area. In the inside of the building, as you kind of work your way into the building, the iron hallway, as we like to refer to it, or iron corridor, which is a series of conics boxes that connects the east and the west part of the building, those are crush-resistant boxes, so that they'll be able to set steel and, and build the new addition around those. They should not be there after probably about the first of October, fifteenth of October at the longest, but they connect the building in front of the auditorium. So, they have been painted, they're getting lights, and they've had a floor put in them. They're actually not too bad, and we'll be taking pictures of those tomorrow morning, along with some other things, and we'll be putting it out to a parent's email district-wide, so that we kind of get to the Instagram before the kids get to the Instagram as far as, you know, the pictures and what to be expecting. There will be parts of the building that aren't quite finished, you know, more aesthetics than anything. I will tell you that all the life safety systems will be up and running fully, they have been checked and then double-checked again. The mapping to get out of the building in the event of a fire has been done, it's been assigned to all the classrooms and how they're gonna get in and out, and I would also say that tomorrow, or no, we do not have a construction meeting tomorrow, but in two weeks, or in a week, we'll have a construction meeting. I would welcome any and all board members to attend that. You will see, it, it is just an absolute difference when you look down the hallway, you come to the main hallway, you look to your right, which is Strive, Famic, Super Science, and it's all brand-new, and you look to your left, which is the West Wing, and it's all the existing, and it's just, it's, it's literally like you're in two different buildings. And to, to think that the entire building's gonna look like that when it's done is, is gonna be quite, quite astounding. So, we're working through that building, teachers are still moving into some of the classrooms, and that, that'll kind of continue on, but we're in a, we're in a really good spot with that spot building. Guys have been working in there, guys and ladies, I don't want to say just guys, but the contractors have been working in there. For a while there, the electricians are working seven, twelve-hour days, the heating and cooling guys were working... Um, and uh, that, that'll kind of continue on, um, but um, we're in a, we're in a really good spot with that uh, spot uh, building. Guys have been working in there, guys and ladies, I don't wanna say just guys, uh, but the contractors have been working in there. For a while there, the electricians are working seven, twelve hour days, um, the heating and cooling guys were working uh, five-twelves. Uh, everybody's pushing very hard to get done, um, so we're in a, we're in a really good spot with the inside of the building, it won't be completely done, done, but uh, definitely shouldn't have any problems having school there on Thursday. So with that, that is kind of the construction update and where we're sitting on things, any questions? Yep.
The lockers. Is that the kind of thing that you said it was always planned, but it was not included in the bid? Is that the kind of thing that our job, the Kraus people should have caught that it was not included?
Um, well, what's happened on several of these things is, you know, uh, the contractors have come back to us, said, well, I didn't have that in my bid, and we said, well, you know, you have a performance bond that says you do, uh, because you have everything in these, and so uh, what's happening, I think, with some of these folks, um, the bids are coming back about where the budgets were on a lot of them, some of them were light. Uh, but yeah, for the most part, we had the same issue with the walls at the high school, the, that front fence that you see on Vine, that re, that kind of uh, fence structure, um, the wall guys uh, said they missed that in their bid, and so um, yeah, so I, I have gone to Kraus and talked to them about, are we making sure we're vetting all of these properly, and, and we're gonna have kind of a um, a reset meeting here once we get school started with both the architect and the construction manager to kind of um, run through a couple of items and make sure we are taking care of things that we need to take care of, but uh, there was no reason they shouldn't have had it in there, um, I don't know if their estimate or missed it or whatnot. It was not thirty-seven thousand dollars for the lockers, that's just what their change order they wanted, and uh, we said no, and they said okay.
No, I understand how things can get missed. My concern is that we've, we're paying Kraus a lot of money to keep track of this stuff, and if there are things that are in the plan that are not in the bids, I would think that somebody would have caught that. So that's just my comment, I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just, in my mind, somebody should have caught that. The people that were paying a lot of money to handle this job should have caught that.
Absolutely. Other questions? Budget wise, just related to construction, I know Jamie wanted me to touch on that. Um, I had Gary Ziffco give me kind of an updated budget, where are we sitting? We're still trending around a million dollars under on the middle school, I know we've got a few odds and end things, punch list items, but we're still trending about that uh, right around there. Uh, high school, between the contingency and everything, we're, we're sitting in a good spot. Um, and general conditions uh, and change orders, so we're overall um, we're, where we'd like to be at the high school, uh, it's just uh, we'll continue to have to kind of push hard uh, financially. We're, we're gonna do a budget update at the next construction meeting, uh, and have Gary run through all the different areas and, and make sure we're in a good spot.
As far as that, the high school though, the um, getting the outside done is kind of where a lot of the um, some of the unexpected, I mean, when you got in the interior of that northwest um, section or quadrant, there was some things also that weren't on plans or building.
Yeah, we have, you know, a big one we're gonna talk about a little bit later in the meeting, which has to do with um, an asbestos abatement that came up, but, you know, for the most part, the really big change orders came through earthwork items uh, at this point, and it's just because they were so massive, but, I mean, you know, we've probably had sixty or seventy change orders at the high school already, um, but I mean, some of them are five hundred dollars, you know, some of them are really small, some of them.
Some change orders are to the good.
Some are the goods, you know, so for example, uh, there were gonna be these sound panels in the gym, uh, the west gym, that, the west gyms never had these sound panels up inside the rafters, and it was really uh, kind of made determination superfluous, so we asked the contractor to give us what the credit would be if we didn't put them in, and it was a ninety-five thousand dollar deduct to not put them in, and so um, so we took the deduct, so that'd be a ninety-five thousand dollar change order to the good. Um, type of thing, we have quite a few other ones that are like that as well, uh, as we continue to work through it.
Yep. But all things considered with that, I know we had a more than three million dollar contingency for these unforeseen things, um, we're trending all right in regard to where the project is overall.
Yeah, so contingency at the high school on question one, we had about three point four million uh, in contingency and change orders to date, uh, pending and ones that have already happened. We still have about three million twenty-one thousand left, uh, and we're inside the building. You gotta remember that the, a lot of the change orders that happened outside had to do with question one, not necessarily question three, the stadium, because they had to do with the parking lots and, and some of those things, so um, a big chunk of some of those outside uh, change orders had to do with the, had to do with question one.
And, and again, that's stuff that was happening underground, we didn't know that we had more topsoil than we were anticipating and, yeah, so, all right, very good, any other questions? Right, hearing none, was that the budget update then? Uh, no. Or no, this is a budget update for the school district, not the construction.
As we get ready to head into the um, uh, annual meeting coming up, um, Tim, we thought Tim would give you a little bit of an update as we head into that.
Yeah, so this will just be short, really based on where we think we've wound, wound up for uh, the year end sixteen seventeen. Um, so we have, we have the independent audit every year, so the auditors were in checking our work, and they completed their field work, and now they'll go in and start to uh, do financial statements, and so they'll come in a, in a couple of months here and, and with a completed audit report, but where we uh, where we're pretty, we're pretty confident. Uh, we've gone through some of the problem areas, talked with the, with the principal of the audit team about some of the problem areas that they're seeing in districts, and we've, we've walked through what we're doing there, and uh, I think we've got, we've got a green light that things are looking okay there, so um, not any concerns that we're aware of at this point. Um, but we, we think, so where we think we're winding up is we're gonna probably add about seven hundred sixty-five thousand to our undesignated general fund balance uh, for the end of the year. So that's about, so if we look at where we budgeted, we budgeted to be a deficit of about a half million, so it's about a, about a one point uh, two swing, so um, that's, that's good news, uh, I think going into that, we're, you know, the possibility uh, for the board to look at different options for that fund balance use, whether it be um, you know, tax relief, whether it be looking at our long-term uh, maintenance, our long-term term capital improvement plan or some of those other areas. Uh, we'll be able to come back and, and walk through some of that information. Um, when we look at areas that we uh, we uh, were favorable variance in the budget, um, we had revenues were up about just under two hundred thousand, a little bit, a little bit less than two hundred thousand higher than where, where we budgeted. Um, one of the areas was interest earnings, so that was good, we, we were focusing on our cash flow and our investments this year, so uh, we were about fifty ahead there. Other area was uh, open enrollment in, some of the revenue we, we received for open enrollment in, that was about fifty thousand up. Um, and if we look at our variances on the expense side, um, we were about roughly six hundred thousand lower uh, than what we budgeted for salaries and wages, and then we were about, I think it was around four hundred thousand lower in benefits side, primarily in the health insurance. So those are the big, kind of the big variance areas that give you kind of a bigger picture high summary here, but we'll come back and give those year-end reports to you now that we're wrapping things up, and then uh, we'll, we'll wait for the audit report again, that'll be uh, yeah, it'll probably be sometime in November. I'm hoping is when they'll have, have that report all finished up for us, so, any questions?
Given this relatively good news about the transition from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, um, what impact, if any, would that have on the budget that we're gonna put forward at the annual meeting, because right now, at the rate that they're going and down in Madison, it's not looking real good that they're gonna finalize stuff before our annual meeting, so.
Yeah, as, I mean, as you all know, Foxconn is, is kind of uh, put the skids on, on progress on the, on the state budget. Um, there, uh, the joint finance is gonna be meeting uh, on the twenty-second regarding Foxconn, so uh, if we're lucky and they get uh, have their ducks in a row, which I, I think that's anybody's guess, uh, maybe we'll have some, we'll have a budget come out uh, before the annual meeting, but I, again, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm real hopeful, because there's, there's probably many moving parts to the Foxconn deal, and there's a lot of, a lot of talk uh, on both sides about what that means for the state, so. Um, but we'll, you know, we'll look at uh, you know, that, that's another thing, as, you know, as I said before, you know, maybe it's some form of tax relief with that fund balance, we will come back with a little more analysis, but we just wanted to give you an update on where preliminarily where we're, where we think we're winding up uh, for this year, this past year.
But compared to other years, it's probably even more true that there, there will likely be or probably be a variance between what budget gets presented at the annual meeting in September, and then what ends up getting approving for a final levy in late October.
Yeah, they're, yeah, and they're, you're right Jamie, and there, and there usually is, um, even, even without a Foxconn, there usually is, because we're working off estimates and uh, let, you know, truthfully, let's face it, I mean, July first deadline for legislature comes and goes, and, and normally uh, in that biennium, uh, there has very rarely been a budget that's been decided on by them, so um, we're in, and yeah, we're usually into and past the annual meeting. So uh, August twenty-eighth meeting, we'll come back and we'll review uh, what, what we'll have for the annual meeting, going into the annual meeting.
Okay, so that's our normal work session meeting for August.
That's right, right.
All right. Any other questions then about budget update? Uh, two weeks from tonight?
Yeah, yeah, twenty eighth, yeah.
Well into the school year by then, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. President? Five thirty.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
You know, Tim, uh, kudos to you and Mark and the rest of the team, you know, from a school perspective, you know, I've, I've learned that it's what, what we do here is quite a bit different than the private sector, and to be as tight, I mean, I just rough numbers within two percent of where you budgeted, with everything else being unknown, you know, kudos to you, Mark and everybody else, great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to topics for action, and is there a motion? Um, please use the language for the consent items and expenditures?
Mr. President? I move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of nine million, two hundred seven thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars and twelve cents.
Motion by Rob, second by Kerry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent items are approved. Moving on then to the second consent agenda item, which is academic career plan. Is this something that multiple people are addressing? I'll let Sandy take it from here.
Jamie, point of clarity, um, you, you mentioned this was another consent item, this is not a consent item, correct?
The next item under the consent item, I'm sorry, after, yeah, this is the second action item, if I sent consent item, I was looking at the uh, overall agenda, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Hudson School District has a proud tradition of being a school district committed to excellence. Our students, families, staff, and community are united in helping all students reach their highest level of academic and personal achievement. This is the Raider Way. Melissa and I provided the board an overview in June, and we're back this evening to share the formal plan for board approval. Tonight we'll provide an overview of PI twenty-six requirements with a focus on that new requirement, academic career plans. The district has a district ACP committee and building level committees at the middle school and high school to work on both the development and implementation of the plan.
Prior to the addition of academic career plan, education for employment was established in nineteen eighty-five out of, as a response out of the growing number of, of individuals who were uh, not making successful transitions into their post-secondary options. The E for E, or Education for Employment Plan, was a five-year plan last approved by the board here in Hudson in two thousand nine. That plan included several components, such as a district profile, it included a labor market information, a profile, profile of our career technical education departments, work-based learning, certification options, et cetera, and we also had goals that aligned with language around pathways, career clusters, and individual student conferencing. In two thousand thirteen, the state signed additional legislation that required the implementation of ACP for all students in grade six through twelve, beginning this school year. All of these activities then were folded under the umbrella of PI twenty-six. The components themselves, as I stated earlier, um, in addition to those components, we also had to include in our district plan how we will address um, supporting students in the process, engage parents, and provide professional development, as well as address all four steps in the process with activities for all students every year. So if we look more at the new component, academic career plans, the ACP is a continuum of activities and experiences both in and out of the classroom, which allows students to develop their self-awareness and a personalized academic and career plan. It is a student-driven, adult-supported process, requiring parents, local businesses, and educators to collaborate so that all students take ownership of their career aspirations. The intent is to provide all students with a game plan for reaching their future career and support system to help throughout the process. Students will create personalized plans that help them see multiple pathways to reach their post-secondary goals, as well as house evidence of the plan, and include such components too that align with our HSD twenty-two, twenty twenty-five graduate learner outcomes. Career cruising is the tool, or a tool, that students will use. Uh, it is a state-funded tool that allows them to um, implement all of the components um, of academic career plan, grade six through twelve. It also allows for documentation and monitoring of completion standards and can be accessed beyond high school graduation. The ACP plan and process place a very strong emphasis on career exploration, not career declaration, and we must keep in mind however, that the activities in career cruising don't solely uh, meet the requirements of PI twenty-six and ACP. Tonight. Oh, um, Tim, do you want to open the top um, link? Yes, please, thank you. Tonight we're sharing with you our district plan. Uh, the first document that you will see is our overarching PI twenty-six ACP goals overview. The aforementioned themes assisted with creating goals and outcomes shown across three themes. Communication, planning and implementation, and business and community involvement. Each of these three areas envelop all of the requirements of the legislation and show implementation and progress over the course of those three phases.
And then, Tim, I'm gonna have you go back and click on the last one. We have two other links that you may have found too. We have the Academic and Career Planning Guide, that will become a communication tool this fall for both parents and students describing ACP, um, and all this information will be also on the website. But I'm gonna point out, um, actually the last one, I pulled out just the learning continuum. So I've mentioned that the ACP has a number of activities then by grade level, so if this is page, you'll see that we have then included the various activities from grade six through grade twelve, including those exploration of careers, um, sixth grade goes to BizTown, we mentioned things like junior achievement um, in sixth grade with the BizTown, and later again in eleventh grade. So this is our starting point as far as what we're planning to do for twenty eighteen, nineteen, for the next few years to put in place. It's a combination of activities and lessons through career cruising, as well as others that will be found through the counseling office and what they're doing through advisory. And then now in sixth and seventh grade, we also have a career pathways exploratory for six weeks that will encompass many of these components as well, so we're feeling very proud of what we've done in the last twelve months. So again, this evening, we are seeking board approval of the PI twenty-six ACP plan. We'll be working with Tracy to post all of the components of the plan on the district website, and staff at the middle school and high school are prepared to continue with implementation this fall. We did have some of the advisors and the counselors do some of the piloting with career cruising last year and attend training. They'll be training again next week that Melissa will attend, since it's not the best time of year for most of us right now. And then um, in October, there's another training, both at the state level and our SEASs have been very, very strong with the training they provided districts. The plan will be reviewed annually and updates will be brought back to the board on an agne, needed basis. Thank you.
Okay, yes, open for discussion, yes.
Mr. President, um, I, as I said before, I think this is a really um, great plan, it's very thorough, and I like the way it's a uh, it's another layer uh, that moves along with the learning process for our students, and my perspective on it is that it's not scary, it's not a scary kind of guide, uh, the tools are not scary for thinking about what you're gonna do post um, high school. Um, and you know, it's, it, it isn't driven by like, you know, fear that, like you said, to declare, I am going to be whatever you're going to be. And also, as I've said before, I, I think of education as something that's on a continuum, not hierarchical, so if you wanna become a welder, or you wanna become a school teacher, or you wanna become a doctor. to become a doctor, any of those are absolutely toe-to-toe, all stand equal to one another, they're just different and fit, um, the individual. So I don't know when you want to motion, but I'll certainly be happy to give one in favor of it.
So is that move to approve?
I'll move to approve, I'd love to say that.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Heather. Any further discussion at this point? We have the motion, we have a second. I don't want to say a good job, I know that, uh, this is another one of those mandates from the legislature that evolves over time and, uh, thankfully, they don't micromanage and you have to fill in a lot of blanks, but, um, you know, again, making it, as Sue pointed out, it's something that goes with the learning as opposed to dictates what the learning's going to be. That's, that's good job, so. Is there any further discussion on this? Otherwise we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much for your work. Moving on to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen certified staff handbook. And, uh, we've got a couple of things to click on here, so which director is, this is going to be Andrea?
Andrea will have them, I mean, we've gone through these at the work session, so unless you have questions, um, you would just be looking for a motion to approve.
We've got, we've seen redline versions, we've discussed these in the workshop and, uh...
The only additional document here is the clean version to reflect the potential changes to the document, so you could see it both ways.
So it's the sub, one has without, one has with the redlining like this, like the numbers, and the other one has it just the way it's going to appear.
How it appeared to staff, yes.
And I know that we've got some board members who are very good with, uh, spotting the typos and the grammatical errors and the missing numbers or periods and, um, uh, but this has been, so it's been reviewed by the board overall, more for content.
Right.
But we've...
And so the key changes, um, would be the increase of the payout for unused personal leave from fifty to seventy-five, uh, as well as credit reimbursement from forty-six, ten to fifty dollars, but no overall budgetary increase because the allotment of money stays the same for that. Other than that, it's name changes, updates and titles, those type of things.
Changing the year, so it's current.
Exactly.
Okay, important stuff, but still we want to be right. We wanted to accurately reflect and, as you said, this is a budget neutral changes to the handbook.
The one budgetary impact is the fifty to seventy-five for the payout of personally, but really it's a benefit for us because we're not paying for the cost of a sub on those days.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy?
I move to accept the, um, changes to the certified employee hand, handbook as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion by Sandy, second by Sue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Next up, um, is consideration of the support staff handbook also for the seventeen eighteen school year.
Same thing, it was presented at the earlier board work session. These don't have those other, the substantive changes, they're primarily cleanup items in terms of updating, again, titles and, um, dates and all of those items.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve the, uh, support employee handbook changes as presented.
Wait for a second.
Second.
All right, Heather gets, Heather gets the second this time, Sandy has the motion. And again, any other questions, concerns, again, budget neutral and updating, uh, things that need to be updated and just in time for school year to start.
Just in time.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to then the two thousand seventeen, eighteen certified staff substitute rates.
This was another item, I believe, that you discussed, um, at the board work session in July, and, uh, we presented comparable data at that time, um, showing that, um, we were at or below, well, actually below the median, um, but in terms of our even surrounding peers, we were low, uh, for our certified, um, supports, uh, certified substitute rates of pay. And so our proposal, as you have in here tonight, is to go to one twenty-five, um, uh, to increase from one-ten to one twenty-five and also get rid of the differentiation between a BA, uh, non-education background and the education background. So we have one rate of pay for our certified staff substitutes.
That's right, and on this sheet, it shows that the backup option to the recommendation was to raise it to one-twenty and sixty respectively, which would have had about a thirty thousand dollar less impact, but that extra five dollars can mean the difference between us getting the sub and some other district getting the sub. So your recommendation is the one that has the estimated impact again of ninety thousand.
And it puts us neck and neck with Stillwater and then closer to South Washington in order to recruit some of them as subs.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
Andrea, I guess two questions. How often are we competing with Minnesota for substitute teachers?
I don't have the specific numbers, but we do talk to the substitutes and we do have comments quite frequently, especially Stillwater, I would say is what I hear more so about, is that, well, I can go to Stillwater and make fifteen bucks, twenty bucks more.
And then my second question is, as far as substitutes in River Falls, Somerset, these other districts in Wisconsin, are we...
Highly competitive.
Are they like Stillwater or are they more in step with option B?
They are closer to one-ten, they match us. Nurichman jumped us, that was our problem last time, is Nurichman was at one-fifteen. Um, they did it at their August board meeting last year. Um, so it's always a bit of a little, you know, maneuvering here, um, but then River Falls routinely matches us. Frankly, we're hopeful that the one-twenty-five will put us in a place where they cannot match us, so that we will be able to staff our buildings as we need to.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve of these changes as suggested to the subpay.
So it'd be option A.
Option A. A cost to the budget of ninety thousand dollars.
Second. Motion by Sandy, second by Rob. Any further discussion on this topic? I know that it has had a lot of discussion already in the work sessions and every year we try to review this. Um, I appreciate all the work that goes into that review because, again, we have to look at districts not just on one side of the river and, uh, Rob's question was a good one about, you know, how does this impact us? But I can, there's anecdotal evidence of people that I know that are educators who, um, have, had given up basically substituting in Hudson because they can get fifteen to twenty more over in the, in the city. So when you start talking about five days a week and if they're, um, virtually permanent substitute teachers, that can make a big impact over the course of longer term and they won't even consider putting their name in a pool where they're going to be getting a hundred dollars less a week or whatever, so. All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Um, very good, then next up would be item F, change order for the high school building package. We get to talk about construction some more.
I know, never get enough of it. The reason it's coming to the full board, this change order amount could, uh, it's a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and seventy thousand. I mean, technically, we could, uh, keep them broken down and below fifty thousand, but, um, we discovered asbestos in the adhesive that was holding the flashing on around the, around the roof. Um, we didn't know it was there, we learned of it as we've been taking the roof off. Um, Kraus has vetted this amount as a not-to-exceed amount, uh, based, uh, based on their attached letter, as you can see from Roof Tech, uh, that's all in there. Uh, we also, uh, Jim Staysgo, I think, talked to our asbestos abatement guy and he thought he would have a tough time beating that number for what it's asking, nine thousand linear feet of, uh, roof flashing at the high school. Uh, so they will be responsible for removing it as they work their way around the roof. They'll keep track of time materials with Kraus Anderson and so the hundred and seventy thousand's a not-to-exceed number, could be less than that, but it will not be more than that, uh, that number. So we'd need a motion to approve the, uh, change order of, of a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and seventy thousand to abate the asbestos.
Mr. President, um, I move that, uh, we approve the, um, the change order to, uh, do the roof abatement or do the, um, asbestos, um, material collection not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand. Should I say the number?
Yep, that's good.
Of WS zero-seven-A. Second.
All right, motion by Sue, second by Sandy. Further questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Rob?
Uh, Nick, with this change order, how much of the existing roof then will be new at the high school? Do you have a sense?
It's, it's only, it's only, we're only doing the scenarios where we're replacing the roof.
Right, and so how much of the roof then would be replaced under the scenario? We know we have a lot of re-roofing in the new construction, but there's a substantial amount of the roof that's...
Um, I'll have to go back and look, I mean, areas that aren't getting a new roof would be the auditorium, that's getting new flashing, uh, over the west gym, I believe, is getting new flashing, but not new roofing. And then over the east gym is not getting a new roof. Uh, other than that, the rest of the building's getting an all-new roof.
Because of this?
No. This is not causing us to do any additional roofing.
Okay.
This is just...
It's just an extra cost in doing the roofing.
Extra cost in doing the roof that we're already planning on doing. So in areas we're not replacing the roof, if there is asbestos, uh, related, um, flashing there, we'll have to deal with that at the time when we need to do it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
This is a surprise roof.
Yeah, what we're finding is, you know, in some parts of the building, there are three layers of roof built up, um, and some other interesting things.
And if those roofs were, I don't know, what's the lifespan of the roofs on the, is it ten years?
About twenty years.
Twenty years, so, I mean, so we are coming up with stuff that could be fifty years old and that's where you're running into asbestos.
Oh, yeah, I mean, some of the stuff was put down two roofs ago and they just roofed over top of it, twenty years ago and forty years ago.
Can't we just do four roofs then?
So, uh, believe me, that, that, somebody brought that up and it, we said, this is, this is ridiculous, we're kicking this can down the road, we need to, we need to deal with these roofs. So the reason we're not doing all the roofs in the entire building is so that we don't have to re-roof that entire building come twenty years from now, that we're still able to kind of have some staggered re-roofs because it's a lot of roofing, uh, to do all at once.
Well, like in the east gym, we're going to be adding to that roof.
Yep.
Basically.
So they just peel it back, uh, add onto it and then they basically weld it to the new roof, just like we've done at the middle school.
Okay.
Yep, it's in good shape.
All right, any further questions on this then? Again, something that, when was it discovered? That was going to be, when was this asbestos discovered?
Uh, looks like about the twenty-fourth is when we got the letter, twenty-fourth of July is when we got the letter from Roof Tech.
So, uh, again, this is, uh, a credit to the people working on that to find that, uh, get the bids, vet it, you know, because this is something that can really shut down the project to have to go around and...
Absolutely. I mean, we've had several different asbestos areas that we've had to deal with that we didn't know were there, nothing of this magnitude, so.
All right.
But it has to be removed, we can't, we don't want our kids involved with asbestos.
Well, the thing is, we have to take the flashing off and so as soon as you take flashing off, it disrupts it. I mean, there, there is one spot in the building where there used to be an old set of risers or it was, it was sunken down, music risers, um, you know, with the time of the project, we didn't have the ability to abate this asbestos at the farthest bottom part of it, but it's now encased in three feet of concrete, so we feel pretty good that, uh, it's not going to cause us any issues. So most of the asbestos, when we come across it, we don't encapsulate, we choose to, uh, remove, it's just some areas we can't.
All right, very good. Any further questions on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion for approval of up to the one hundred and seventy thousand is approved and...
Okay.
Final, um, action agenda item.
This is, this is more of a point of clarity, you've actually already approved this, but we thought we'd add it again, so, uh, this, this work scope was approved at a previous board meeting. This is just, all this is, is work scope thirty-one and, uh, um, I'm sorry, thirty-three A, site utilities and some of these other things. So what happened was, we have total excavating on the site, that was part of bid pack one, if you remember. Um, they also got then, uh, they were also given, or awarded the bid for digging the foundation out and the footings and everything for the new addition. That was part of work scope, or I'm sorry, bid pack two. So in an effort to not have them go through and do another bid buy, or another performance bond and all those things, we can, what we can do, because they already have a contract with them, is instead of having a separate contract for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, we just amend or change order their existing contract for another hundred and thirty-five thousand. This is exactly what we did with Zappa's contract with the middle school, um, when we did the middle school parking lot because he was already doing work on that site, uh, so they're able, they're able to do that. You've already approved this amount to be done on this work, it's just, we wanted to be able to go back and have a, a point where we can say, okay, because this is technically a change order over a hundred and thirty-five thousand or over a hundred thousand, uh, that the board took action on, even though you've already actually approved to award this contract to total excavating, so.
We need to take action on that.
So, yeah, so what we're looking at is a, uh, um, move to approve change order six on work scope thirty-one A, thirty-three A and thirty-three B to total excavating for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Designated as, okay, so Kerry has moved?
Second.
Second by Sue for approval of its change order designated number six, but the work scopes in the description.
It's change order number six for those work scopes, not change order number six for the entire project.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of clarification, so we're not looking to amend a contract, Nick, as you've said, but we're looking to change?
It's a change order. All change orders are amending contracts. Every change order is an amendment to the contract.
Right, any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.